Good afternoon, this is Dennis Fletcher and it's Sunday afternoon, October 25th, and we're here with Hemet I News talking to Malcolm Lilienthal, who's a candidate for District 3 of the Hemet City Council. And we're gonna start off Malcolm by just ask you a little COVID-19 question. I notice we're six feet apart. Do you have any symptoms of COVID-19 yourself?
No sir, I do not.
Well, I don't either, so do you feel comfortable if we pull our masks down?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we're just gonna doft our masks a little bit and that'll help the audio quite a bit. But we are very concerned about following the regulations that we all need to follow to get over this pandemic. So let's get started Malcolm. First, we're gonna talk a little bit about your background and then we're gonna go into some critical areas that the news agency feels are important. One has to do with jobs and job opportunities and one has to do with personal safety in the area of Hemet. And finally, we're gonna take a look at sort of a unique proposition that you've made about ways of pulling the community together in ways that are of your thinking and liking. So we'll get started by just asking you to give us a little background about your professional life and what you feel qualifies you to serve on the city council.
Well, I am an associate marriage and family therapist down here in Palm Street and it's called New Hope Christian Counseling. I've been there for about three years. I've been practicing as a therapist for about five years and I feel that my background is, it matches with what someone would call as city council member because what I do with my everyday clients is what I could incorporate as a whole with the entire city. So for example, if someone comes in to my office with a problem and they might say, hey, these are the symptoms I'm having and then I give a diagnosis and the diagnosis is to call them crazy, the diagnosis is so that we can create a treatment plan for them to get better. So then I think that my background as a therapist would go along with being a city council member because it's not like I'm gonna diagnose the entire city. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna find out the symptoms that are happening in the city and then we're going to create some kind of, for lack of better words, a diagnosis and then create a treatment plan for the entire city so that at least the city knows what we're treating, why we're treating it, and how to make it better.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you very much. Let's dive right into one of the key issues that Hemet residents have been concerned about for a long time, which is jobs and getting new businesses in the area. Do you have some thoughts in that area that you'd like to pursue as a city council person?
Well, when it comes to jobs, it seems like it is very needed in this valley. There are a lot of people out here. I think the biggest thing to focus on is the barriers to the jobs. So it's what's stopping particular people in Hemet from getting these jobs that are here and then what's stopping the city itself from getting more jobs to come into the city of Hemet. And so what it looks like is you have a lot of people here who do not necessarily either qualify for some of these jobs that could come based on their backgrounds and you know, if they have felonies, if they're on parole or probation. So there's those barriers and then once we look at the barriers to people getting jobs, then we can look at how do we get more jobs to come in? Because if we get jobs to come in and everybody here has some kind of barrier to it, then what's the purpose of getting the new jobs here? So it's like we have to somehow get a consensus of all the people who live here and reside in the city of Hemet and get a little bit of like understanding of where their backgrounds is, how we can help them so that we can get the right jobs to come here and partner with the right... Because if we just ask any corporation to come here, they're gonna want to benefit from that. And if we have people here who have the background and the wherewithal to work in some of these entry level and some of these manufacturing jobs that we could potentially bring to Hemet, then I feel like we can match potential corporations with our, the citizens who are already here. And I think that's a big, a big step to bringing jobs here, to even making sure that the jobs that we already have here are filled. You know, some people don't wanna work, so we have to find out what's the barrier or what's their motivation for not wanting to work? Is it just wanting to, you know, be with someone who is, you know, on getting like county money and you know, they don't wanna necessarily be motivated for their own selves to pick their, to make their own way? Or is it because their background? Every time I go out for a job, they look at my background, I don't qualify, or they don't accept people who, with a particular background? What are these barriers? Can we find out what these barriers are and can we make it such a way that we can eliminate these barriers?
Great, okay. And so what I heard you say there Malcolm was that some of your background as an associate family therapist brings a kind of a unique perspective to these community problems. Maybe we can hear a little bit more about that as we look at the other problems. And this focus on barriers is something new I haven't heard anybody say yet. So I think that's something interesting for people to think about, is that somebody with your kind of background looking at barriers to people making their life work might be better qualified to look at the community barriers.
Yeah, someone mentioned to me that they're, you know, they're on my face page and they questioned, because I was talking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs and they said, "We don't really know what that means." And it's basically one particular barrier that doesn't allow a person to make their way or at least orient themselves to some kind of positive measure in their life is, do they feel safe? What that is is, do they have access to water? Do they have access to food? Do they have access to the basic needs, shelter, warmth, those things? If a person doesn't feel safe, then they can't move up Maslow's hierarchy of needs in that, in that triangle. So it's like, once we meet a person's basic needs, do they feel safe? Then they'll, then you can, we can talk about, you know, community connection, love and things like that. But if somebody's living in survival, I mean, you have to imagine, if somebody's been living in survival for so long, how do we expect them to be able to orient themselves in like a mature way or something like that? Someone would say. So recently, I was talking to an individual that it was like they, based on their background, they have this high IQ, you could say, for, "I can tell if you're lying, I can tell if you're, you're a con man, I can tell like something about you." But then when it comes to emotional intelligence, they lack in that, you know? So the inability to build connections and bonds with people, that's lacking. And that's one of the things that you'll see in people who, whose the bottom level basic needs haven't been met because they're just trying to survive out here and there's no more living when you're just trying to survive. Does that make sense? So that's a barrier.
So we could be talking about homeless people, people on the verge of homelessness that can't make the next month's rent or the next month's are gonna lose their car and be out on the street.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So if you're, you know, it's like stepping off the sidewalk, a bus comes, you jump out of the way of that bus, only to find yourself jumping into the path of another bus and you never get to relax. And then you have these people that are around you like, hey, get yourself together, but you can't even relax to even, to even like sit back and like, what do I really need to do with my life? How can I make this all happen? Because you're just so reactive, you know? And then because you're in this reactive kind of mode, when anybody comes to advice or anything like that, you can't, it doesn't make any sense to the, to the person that you're giving the advice to. So I talked to some of these kids here in Hemet and they're making like two grand selling meth, right? And it's like, I say, "Hey, why don't you go get a job instead of selling, you don't have to look over your shoulder?" That doesn't make any sense to them because they don't feel safe, they don't feel, if they stop making this money, there's nothing, because they're just worried about today and that's what survival is. I'm just worried about today, I'm not thinking about if I get caught tomorrow or if I, you know, run into, make contact with law enforcement in any kind of way. I'm just trying to survive today. My little brothers and sisters aren't eating, so I'm out here selling this meth or if I'm a 13-year-old young woman out here in Hemet, I'm a prostitute myself so that I can feed my younger brothers and siblings because my parents are strung out over here. And some of these things we're not really looking at, we're just complaining about these people running around stealing and things and not really looking at like the root of the problem and it's just more about, we have to, it's war on drugs, it's war on crime, but we're talking about people who are just surviving. If we can get to these barriers of why, of how these people are, are living, that would be able to bring the community together because then people can at least relax.
I asked somebody the other day, how many homeless people I thought were in Hemet? And they said somewhere between maybe 70 and 100 in Hemet. So you've got that many people that are at that first level, survival level. And it's pretty noticeable to a lot of the citizens, but I think you're right, a lot of people wanna just take a harsh get rid of them approach and not really gonna ever understand what person's going through. Let's transition into another concern of the community here, which is public safety. You're walking down, you're walking out of Denny's down on Florida, it's 10 o'clock at night and you see a bunch of people on little 20-inch bikes and they don't look like you and all of a sudden you get nervous and you're gonna have to walk into a parking lot and public safety becomes a big issue along with this earlier discussion, maybe we don't understand those people that are in that situation.
Yeah.
Do you have some thoughts about public safety, what we could do to improve it for the whole community, not just come down hard on these people that are on Maslow's level one, to make it easier for the rest of the folks?
Well, the reality of that is, we're not gonna be able to save everyone or help everyone. And that's one thing I had to contend with when I first started this, my career in psychology because I wanted to help everyone and I wanted to get everyone out the streets and I wanted to help all the couples love each other and, you know what I mean? And help with, you know, with couples that have, you know, these troubled teens and kids with, you know, parenting practices, healthy parenting practices. But when it comes to, to public safety, it's, unfortunately, we'll have to create standardized ordinances that mimic surrounding cities that makes it harder to be on the streets like that. Why? Because what we wanna do is we wanna funnel those individuals to specific areas like these nonprofits and these churches to, so that they, it's almost like they're, you're almost forcing the hand for them to get help. Because sometimes people who are on Maslow's hierarchy of needs don't necessarily know that they need help and not necessarily want help. So if we have standardized ordinances throughout the city and surrounding cities, then what that does is it makes it harder for people to be out on the streets because they'll be sighted and things like that. If you, if we create a place for them to go to at least stay the night, they could do whatever during the day, but at least during the night, you have this place where you could stay at. Because some of these businesses out here have to pick up needles in the morning and they have to pick up feces after some of these people who are not respecting some of these, these businesses. And so if, if they're not going to respect the area, then the ordinances need to be tighter and they need to be upheld. If that looks like more security and more police officers, then that's what has to happen in order to enforce some of these laws or ordinances. But at the same time, we can't make it hard on people and then not give them, you know, something to, to go to. So it's like, we can't say, "Oh, let's make stronger laws and let's make stronger this" when we don't give the person like an out or, you know, it's something like you tell your child, "Stop doing something," but then you don't give them an alternative. So then they find something else maladaptive to get into. Instead of you redirecting their behavior or their energy into something else that's more healthier. And so that's, that's the whole idea with working with the, you know, the security of Hemet and the police department of Hemet to enforce some of these ordinances a little... And then it's, the biggest thing, I think too that will help, is more lighting. If there were more lighting around, then there would be less places to hide. And if there's less places to hide, then these people won't be out like how they are. And then because there's more lighting, people feel safer if somebody is sleeping on, on the corner because it's well lit. So more lighting, I think, is the first foremost, right? And then making sure that the ordinances are held with the same standards of surrounding cities, that's important, but then also making sure that these people have somewhere to go. Because we can't make these, we can't make stronger laws and then they don't have nowhere to go. That doesn't make any sense.
What about sending police out to nonviolent domestic violence altercations and arresting the mentally ill for doing what mentally ill people do? Do you have some thoughts on that?
I believe that if the police department can partner with, you know, the Department of Social Services, that instead of the police officers going out, I wanna make this distinction clear that I don't suggest social workers go out. I suggest that a team that could help alleviate the police's job of going to these domestic calls. That way, the police can work on being more proactive in the city and, and going to things that are more, because that prime is within the four walls. That, you know, the domestic violence, the domestic dispute, that's within the four walls. But there's a lot of other things around Hemet that the police department could be getting involved and they probably want to, but there's so many, there's so many domestic violence calls and there's these things that kind of divert their attention, so now the police department's reactive. So if we can divert some of the attention off of the police department going to these domestic calls, they could do it in such a way where there's a team that works for... So, so this would be good for the Department of Social Services because now they have a team that's kind of, that works like, that has the authority to kind of go into some of these homes and break up these fights. But not only that, now they get services because they can get couples counseling, they can get individual counseling if it's just one person and they can get like the family counseling that they would get if their, their children were removed from them. So then they get the services they need and then they, you know, best case scenario, they get couples counseling or something like that through the department and then they don't have the repeat of police officers or, or the department having to go back over there because they know how to communicate in a more healthier way versus what they've already known. You know what I mean? Some, some people just need the language to communicate, that's it. And I think that's the, the best way to help alleviate some, because the Hemet Police Department only has like something around 76 officers compared to, we have like 80,000, 87,000 people who live in Hemet. We only have, like, that number should be around 106 police officers.
I think it's about half the size of the average city Hemet size, so they're doing a, they have a tough job.
Yeah.
They have a tough job.
So if there are other groups that would step up to the plate, you know, and partner with the police department, like, "Hey, we could, we could take this off of your hands", that would be great, you know? That's, that's what I'm talking about with like community support. You know, we, we can work together to make sure that these, your neighbors next to you is, is doing all right and you know your neighbor isn't getting, you know, beat and they, they know the resources of where they could go.
So would that be like Riverside County resources, like Riverside University Riverside Behavioral Health or?
Yeah, yes.
General Health Center down in Monroe and?
Yes.
State?
Yes. And some of these people, they, the people that live in the, in the city don't know that they have these therapeutic resources available for them until they get some kind of CPS investigation in their life and then it's, and then they're forced to do it, you know? So if the, if you're not doing right by your children, the, the state can come and take your children from you. That same attitude should be applied to people, you know, who are on the streets because it's not fair that... I understand that some people, they wanna be homeless and I understand that some people are in these predicaments where they, they found themselves in that position, right? So you have one side of the people are like, "You need to get your, you need to get yourself together." And then you have these other side, these other people who are like, "We need to do something to help them," you know? "We need to be in a, we need to be in the middle of that," you know? Because you, you're still responsible for your own life and just because you made the choice for your life to be that way, doesn't mean it's not affecting other people. So you have to pay attention to how your individual life is affecting others around you and to make sure that your specific life, because it's like, "Well, I'm not hurting nobody, I'm just living on the street." But then when you leave that soda can in front of the business or you leave that needle in front of the business and now the kids who come to my establishment see the needle and pick up the needle because I didn't catch it before I came into my, you know, then it becomes dangerous. Does that make sense? In front of Starbucks, in front of any, any establishment, you know? So it's, that public safety element is, is very important to me because I wanna make sure that people feel safe. And right now, you know, we're kind of focusing on homelessness, but there's, there's a, there's a deeper problem.
Okay. And do you have some thoughts about how we could tackle those problems?
Look, minimum wage was raised in California, right? But then so was the gas tax. If the gas tax, if the gas gets raised, then bread, everything, the materials to get the wood down here to build more houses, everything goes up. So then it was, it, it didn't really help the person who, who got a raise for their minimum wage higher. It didn't really help them because now they're spending more money driving, you know? So it kind of negated the whole thing and it's like, a lot of legislation, but you know, we could come up with these excuses like, you know, "It's coming from high up and down," right? But in the city of Hemet, we can work together to make sure that everybody can eat and everybody can have a chance to make their life better. Does that make sense? And that's my focus is, we gotta get away from this individualism stuff and that's what I mean. So like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the homeless people at that first tier, so are a lot of people who are not homeless. They're still just living in survival too. So it's not just homeless, you know? And you have people who are on the verge of being homeless. You have people who don't know that six months from now, they could be homeless for whatever reason. But it's like, where, where is our mindset and how are we working together? There's something like, how many, 220 churches in Hemet? There shouldn't be no one on the street.
A lot of nonprofits out there.
There shouldn't be anyone on the street. Everybody's electric bill should be paid. There's too many, there's too much help out here, you know?
This is sort of transitioning into something that's unique about Malcolm's campaign, which is an emphasis on getting the community to be more involved in the community. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about what your thoughts are in that area?
I'd like to see, so I heard some stories, I said this in a previous interview, I heard some stories that, that the city of Hemet used to be very, they used to do things as a community a lot, you know? And I guess the big thing was the farmer's market, but was recently moved to a different area. It was, it was by some railroad tracks, like behind the police station, like next to it and it was big. I mean, they would have jumpers for the kids, they would have all these things. It's been moved and it's not, hasn't been the same ever since. But not only that, it's, so many people are coming into Hemet that we don't know who's here. So it's a bunch of people who we don't know who's here. Like someone asked, "Look, who are you Malcolm? You just came out of nowhere running for city council," you know? And I've been here since about 2002. So it's like, I've seen this, the growth of the city and I've, and I've, I've seen like the degradation of, I mean, I recently got a flat tire because of like potholes and things like this in the streets and stuff and I'm thinking, what is happening that we're not working together in the city to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do good, right? That's the whole, that was the whole reason why the constitution was even created, so that everybody had, had rights. But not only rights, we had responsibilities behind those rights. Why? So that we could each individually move in a space and time and orient ourselves towards the greater good, to be the best, best version of ourselves. But I don't, I don't see that today in the city. One of the things that I have a big concern about is that I don't see a vision or mission statement for the city. Why don't we have a mission or a vision statement for Hemet? Where is Hemet going? I don't, I couldn't tell you where the city of Hemet is going. It's like we're just tackling each problem as they come, but we're not really thinking, we don't have an aim for something, you know? And it's, so when it comes to getting the community together, it's like, let's aim for getting the community together, but what does that look like? Well, that looks like each district getting to, a responsibility of each district getting to know, each citizen inside of each district, getting to know each other. But I'm not gonna leave that to their, to the each district's own proclivity. What I'm gonna do is, you know, create like fun things that the, each district could do together and then get all five districts together so that everybody kind of knows everybody and that beats up public safety too, you know? And then it also beats up, bolsters community and community involvement and that's a big emphasis, is community involvement, creating app where people can kind of, what, what can we do here and remember adopt a block? Adopting a block, maybe District 1 can adopt certain blocks and everything and make sure it's cleaned and whoever's there, they can volunteer and District 2 and District, all the different districts can adopt something, you know what I mean? And then, okay, so how does District 5 or how does District 1 or my District 3 help the particular homeless people that are in that, that specific district? We always see the same faces there, you know? And then we tackle, we help them with the nonprofits who live within District 3 and then District 2 does the same thing and then the community kind of works together and then you see less homeless people. We get it down to, you know, it's what, we can get it down to 12%. There's still homeless people, right? But it's better, you know? Maybe the ones who are still on the street eat better. Maybe they're still taken care of because they got somewhere to sleep at night, kind of thing.
Maybe you can whittle it down to a manageable number to devote some county resources to, you know?
Instead of?
Instead of hundreds.
Because I know there's a sect of people who are like, "Just get rid of them." And then there's the other side who are like, "How do you just get rid of somebody?"
Like, where would they go if we?
And that's what I don't understand. I don't, you know? So then I brought up a question about how come the city of Riverside, the city of Riverside, the county of Riverside just gives them a piece of land? Hey, go develop this land, there's no liability. The city, the county loses the liability because it's like, you just go over there and you make your way. We did it before, hunters and gatherers, you know, we're products of evolution, right? We did it before.
After we came down out of the trees.
Why, why couldn't we just, people are, people have a lot of ingenuity and we think some of these homeless people are dumb, but they're, they're very smart, you know? I mean, a lot of us couldn't last on the street as long as they do.
I know, I've used some who have, still have their electrical licenses and know how to do lap and blaster work and plumbing, so you're right about that.
They could make their way and then you'd have this whole community of people and I bet you they would do right by themselves. They have their, probably fix their own form of government, fix their own, you know, rules and everything and people get ostracized if they don't follow the rules, you know what I mean? And, but it's like, we don't give people the benefit of the doubt or the chance because for whatever reason, we think people are just up to no good all the time. But there's a reason why.
I think some of the surrounding cities have started projects in that area like Palm Springs were theirs, so that, there's probably a lot to learn from looking at the other cities.
Well, Beaumont has the low-income homes. I know like a lot, there's, there's some people who don't like low income because that means more of a specific demographic that people don't want to come, but it's... Specific demographic that people don't want to come, but it's, you get people in some of these low income homes. And then you, and then you work with them to get out of the low income home. So it becomes like transitional. So then they buy. They buy a home in Hemet, right? That raises the property taxes. Or the income from the property taxes to come in, right? Because now we have more people. Not owning, but not renting, you know, or on section eight or something like that. Cause it's like, my parents, they live in District Four by West Valley. They were, house was broken into. And I went around the neighborhood, it's like six hundred and sixty-five houses. And I asked, I knocked on every door. Some I was, ran away. S- some, some of the houses were empty. But at least seventy-three percent of those people in there are renting. They don't even own the place that they live in, you know? And it's like, you, you drive down Hemet and it looks kind of worn down and. It doesn't really look like a place that jobs would come to, that corporations would come to. But it's like, we have to beautify this place and we could do that working together. We can't do that separated. We need everybody, we need everybody together. We can't do this separated. I'm coming, I'm running for city council because I wanna remind people that we do it better when we work together. And not, and quit this sacred, I don't know, are we in a preschool?
We have a lot to learn, don't we? Well, Malcolm, I, I heard you talk about standardized ordinances. I like that idea, looking at the ordinances of the other cities around. What are they doing about some of their, uh, crime issues, homeless issues? Uh, and, uh, maybe senior issues with, uh, older population that needs special attention. Uh, I liked, uh, your idea of leveraging nonprofits and churches. That sounds like it's a large resource that we could do a di- a better job of tapping into, maybe.
Yes. And I haven't even talked about the, you know, like my City Youth and some of these other organizations. I just brought up the churches.
Yeah. And, um, like your idea of teaming up police with social workers and mental health people out of, uh.
Not social workers.
Well.
Not social workers.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I guess you wouldn't advocate social workers then. Some people do, but it sounds like you don't. So who would be the, who would the police be teamed up with, uh, to do this, uh, nonviolent work?
Well, it would, it would have to be, I guess they could have a background in social, they would have to have a background in social work. But when I think, you know, when most people think of social workers, they think of the, this, like a woman.
Short female.
Short female.
Without, without a black belt.
Yes. And she, somebody opens a door and they're six foot eight, three hundred and thirty-five pounds. You know, he just finished beating his wife. What is she gonna do?
But aren't you advocating a team with a.
Yeah.
Police officer.
Yes. So, um, instead of like maybe one, you know. I, it, I was, I was hoping that it could go where the police didn't have to go at all. But the police notified this, this, uh, sect of the department. That was, that's gonna obviously be created just for our city, you know? Um, maybe as a testing ground, right? And those people go out.
Oh, okay. I see.
Yeah. But not specifically social workers, cause, you know, maybe, maybe a social worker goes just in case a child has to be removed. Maybe.
Well, I have a daughter who's a psychiatric social worker. It's right up there with, uh. Police work and it's a pretty dangerous job. A lot of them get killed every year.
Yes. That's why it, these people would have to be, you know, up to this, because you're, you're talking about somebody. Who is very sympa- who's in a very sympathetic response right now, you know? Flyer fight.
So Malcolm, before we, uh, make this too long, put everybody to sleep. Let's see if we can kinda wrap it up with a little bit of a summary here. What are the top reasons why? You feel people should vote for you? What do you bring to the table here that voters should think about? And then maybe you could give us a little bit of information on how they could contact you for more information.
I hope the main thing is that you, you realize that I, I really wanna work with people. I really wanna work with the city to get the city together. So that we can create something beautiful. You hear a lot of rhetoric of people saying, I don't like where I live or I'm ashamed of Hemet or something. It's like, people go to Temecula and Hem- and, uh, Marietta because it's, it's beautiful. And that's what you hear. There's more things to do. I'd like to hear some, some talk like that of maybe the people from Temecula and Marietta coming to Hemet because of. We've created things for tourism that supports tourism. We've created, um, community events where people from the community get heavily involved. And there, they'll, there should be incentive, incentives like. District Five's best kept yard or District Five's, or District One, um, who can make the best ribs. You know what I mean? Or who could, you know what I mean? Just like camaraderie within each district. And then the entire city, all the districts working together to maintain this, uh, something that could be very beneficial for everyone. You know, and I'm saying, I'm using the word could because everybody has to work together. And so I'm, I'm challenging everybody to give me a chance because I believe that I could inspire. Something inside of everyone to say, hey, I believe that we can make a change and it takes all of us. And it's not just gonna take five individuals who are, who are gonna be sitting on this council seat. That's gonna take the entire community of Hemet to really press on these five individuals to make sure that. They're doing what they're, they said they were gonna do, you know, when they were campaigning. And one of the big things is, first of all, if, if you guys elected me and, and get me in there. I wanna make sure we have a mission and vision statement, cause how are you guys gonna measure progress if we don't even have an aim or a goal? To, to, to measure it against, like, are, are we moving in the right direction? What are we doing? And I wanna make sure that everybody is, is on the, that's where it comes back to transparency is. Are we, are we doing or moving in the direction that we said we were gonna move? Or are we just simply reacting to every little problem that comes up? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking for the community's help to get me elected because. I, I, I'm gonna work very hard to make sure that I get this entire, all five districts working together. Cohesively, cause this is, we're better than this. I promise you, we're better than this.
Great. Now let's, uh, in terms of the wrap up, uh, and the identity at the end, uh, let's, uh, let's, uh, get your name straight. Uh, we got a couple of, uh, of landmines in here. Uh, just like that name, uh, Abraham Lincoln's last name, there's a silent L in Lincoln. And there's a silent L hiding in your name too, Malcolm. Uh, and then you've got a last name that's spelled a little bit differently than most people would spell it, cause they throw in an extra L.
Yeah.
So maybe you could tell us, uh, what your name is and, uh, make sure we know how to find you on the internet.
So Malcolm is actually pronounced Malcom and it's Scottish. My last name is Lilienthal and it's spelled L-I-L-I-E-N-T-H-A-L. And it's German and Jewish. Meaning Lily of the Valley. You can find me if you just Googled Malcolm candidate Hemet. And you'd, it'd take you to my face page, which is Malcolm Lilienthal. For the number four, District, the number three. Does that make sense? So Malcolm Lilienthal for District Three. And that's where you could find my face page and some things that I've wrote about. And you can kinda see my mind and how my mind works on there.
It's a Facebook page?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, is there a phone number they can reach you at or?
Nine five one, nine two three, two four zero five.
There you go, folks. You got any questions for, um, Malcolm Lilienthal here? You can contact his, uh, face page, leave a note, give him a call, ask him more information if you have any questions about this. Interview, which has covered a lot more material in depth than we cover in most of our interviews. So this is, uh. I think there's a lot to chew on in what we've talked about here. Malcolm, on behalf of Eddie George, the publisher of Hemet iNews. Uh, and Gene Astron, who's our, um, videographer here in the room. And Keenan Clark, who's our backup videographer. I wanna thank you for participating today. And we wish you all the best in your campaign.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.